Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
This is a meeting of the Board of Revision of Taxes and Appeals. Ms. Collins is going to make an announcement.
Yes, so I just want to make a statement that immediately prior to this Board of Revision meeting, that council met in executive session with myself to consult regarding the pending litigation matters that are on the agenda for this Board of Revision meeting.
And after the meeting that they just had, the executive session, council needs more time and more information in order to vote on the items, so there will be no vote taken tonight, and the meeting will be rescheduled at further, you know, another date. That's all we need, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Adjourn. Relax. That was simple enough.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom. Thank you, Bill. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Brooks is excused. Mr. Marconi.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
President.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Belishko.
Here.
Also intended is Administrator Charlie McCormick, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Semple. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail, except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. Chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Would anyone like to speak on pending legislation?
Wait, I gotta do this here.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on. There's just one announcement. City council agenda has been amended to include a resolution on the consent agenda regarding this year's Oktoberfest on Public Square. The resolution will suspend the open container law for the event. The reason for the amendment is that the event is September 30th, and council does not meet again before that date. Act 65 of 2021 states that council may take official action on a matter if a majority of the governing body formally approves the amendment of the agenda to include the additional matter. So with that being said, council will need to vote to amend the agenda to add the Oktoberfest resolution. So we need a motion and a second.
Do we have to?
We're gonna add it first, and then they can speak.
Oh, we're adding it.
So we're gonna add it, and then the public can speak. So I need a motion to add the resolution to the...
All motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Roll call, Mr. Marconi.
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Belishko.
Yes.
Okay, so the agenda has been amended to add that item. Now, nobody wants to speak.
If anybody would like to speak on pending legislation, that includes the new...
No. No. Angel Mathis was there. I have a question. With the LSA funds, have those been approved, or are you guys doing submissions for applications for them? Because looking at the LSA, looking at all the LSA, I think that the, for the creeds good, you know, okay, no, oh, no, this is what I wanted to know. Like with the matters of, oh, that was a book too. I just think that even though I know LSA passed through, it seems like the colleges are getting more money than they actually give when it comes to, because I know you can't tax them because they're non-tax, and they do the pilot, but it seems like with all the grants and everything that we pass through, city council is like, that's lackable. So, you know, there's nothing I can say because the applicant, oh, no, it adds a bit of a lot. So if it's not approved, does that mean that most have to fund their own police upgrades to their systems, and that Sherman Street Properties Business Center is roofed? They would be required to pay for that themselves. It's just that I see that with the creeds, you know, with the walls and the creeds, you know, why can't more money be actually applied for those items on the agenda? Because those are most needed by the residents. I don't see, you know, updating Wilkes's security and emergency system benefiting the city all that much. It benefits Wilkes. And as far as the Sherman Street Properties Business Center roof replacement, is that part of actual Sherman Hill, or is that a different business? And that's it?
Anyone? You got it, or?
No, go ahead.
We have these situations every year, these applications. These are merely applications that pass through us to the state. There's actually no guarantee that any of these applications are going to be receiving any funding whatsoever. But to answer the second part of your question, if they are not approved, if they do not receive the funding from the state, they're not under any obligation to do anything themselves. They don't have to upgrade their security systems, put a roof on, or whatever they're applying for. This is to assist them in those particular projects. And I understand that the colleges and other nonprofits don't provide any taxation relief to the city. You're correct in that. But I don't think it would be fair to hold them hostage for that particular reason and not allow these applications to pass through and be forwarded to the state before... They are projects that the applicants believe are worthy, they meet the requirements, and they go to the state to decide whether or not they received any funding. So as you said, you used the word "pass through" yourself. It's basically what we are. For them to submit the applications to the state, the applications need a individual resolution from council. So that's the process here. The funding is not coming in any way, shape, or form from any city funds.
Okay, thank you.
There are grants that bring money into the city, into the city that wouldn't be there. You know what I'm saying? Make our city do it.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't benefit the residents. A lot of it goes to college.
Anyone else on pending legislation?
Sam. Hi, Justin White, Martha's Vineyard. I have a question on...
Turn the light back.
I have a question on the Sherman Properties, Street Properties. So I believe that is owned by House Jones, and he currently rents it out for, I'm assuming he gets money for the rent. So do we look at these grants, or we just pass them all through their account? Because he's currently getting income on that property, and I think they're passing for coming home, probably eight businesses in there, but he's getting monthly rent from. So I'm not sure why, we're giving him $350,000 for a roof, and probably use something for a more, maybe nonprofit, or somebody else who uses it. I mean, I know the DPW have used a lot of work to ring that job, or something, who knows? Just, so just, I guess my question is, are we just pushing them all through, or do we actually review them, and do we deny some?
No, each one will be voted on, and so it's not an automatic push-through. I mean, obviously, over the past several years, there have been some that have not been approved.
Yeah, I mean, I know our most have come through our nonprofit schools, and stuff like that, but this particular business is a private business.
And I believe that, I believe that is an LLC of some form, but I understand what you're saying. I agree.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else on pending legislation? Sam?
First of all, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything that Kathy said. It was efficient to the agenda concerning, again, the lifting of the alcohol.
Right, for the Oktoberfest on September 30th.
Let me just call your attention to the fact, now, I don't know if Jim Henry is here, I don't know if Maureen will know, but when was this added? Because you're not, there was a law passed that said you can't add anything to the agenda.
Absolutely.
It's $48 of the meeting.
No. There are exceptions.
There are exceptions?
There are exceptions, and one of them is additions by majority vote. A political subdivision may take official action on a matter if a majority of the governing body formally approves the amendment of the agenda to include the additional matter. The reasons for amending the agenda must be announced at the meeting, which I did, and the agenda as so amended must be posted on the subdivision's website, which it is, and will stay up, because they have to do it by tomorrow, and be posted on the door, which it is. And there's three other reasons. There's emergency situations, new situations, and you can do, it's not an emerg... No, I said there's other, there's additional reasons. One of them is emergencies, one is for new situations.
That's what you hit.
Yes.
Well, assuming that's going to be voted on, I wanted to express my voices in opposition, you can add, you all know, the ordinance to the alcohol, the split, everything you request for, makes it a joke. The real effects here, that shouldn't come off my mind, you can explain it to me.
Forgive me, Bishop.
First of all, I would like to see these, the items concerning the rule for the LSA grants voted on separately. I don't know if that's going to be the case. I guess council has to request that. Because seriously, I just, and I know there's going to be at least one other person talking in opposition, there's already one. I cannot see the, I know the story, Bill, I know it's an LSA, I know what LSA is all about, but the city could apply to this money directly. There's such a thing as prioritizing here. The city can use this money itself desperately for a lot of things. One of them is historical preservation. I can roll off a list of about 500 items. Why should, again, $53,000, and I know they may not get that much, they may not get anything, okay, but the city should not be a partner in funding and supplementing corporate interests at what you want to call corporate wealth, or wealth or whatever, in terms of the Boxton group. Where the Boxton group is going to go forward like this with the intentions of making money, there's nothing wrong with that. We're all capitalists to a certain extent, but why we have to use, we only have a limited amount of public money, LSA money, isn't that correct, Charlie? The city can only apply from certain, I mean, if the city wanted it itself, the city going to apply for somebody else, that limits the amount the city can get for itself. My point being, why can't the city use some of this money for its own purposes? And I, as I said, can name off a lot of things. And I don't, and I think, again, helping out people to, and another hotel project? Are you kidding me? How many hotels can this city take? The downtown seems to me like it's dying. Okay, this guy wants to go forward, then that's fine, that's fine, hey, let him use his own money. And as far as the Wilkes thing goes, that was just mentioned, that's a disgrace, that the city should help out Wilkes. How much property does this Wilkes own in the process of buying out and refurbishing South Bay Street there? And what are they, puts the pilot? About $100,000 a year for a lucky that the city gets? Where is it, where is the, where is that compensated for? It's on the backs of the taxpayers, many of whom are struggling, some of whom are facing foreclosure, struggling to put food on the table, et cetera. And you're, okay, it's LSA money, I know, again, they may not get the grant, but again, it's something, why can't, for instance, this money be used for some other specific thing? The mayor had a great, very lawful program in effect for a while, which was people who were economically disadvantaged would apply for loans to refurbish and renovate their homes. That was a great program, but it's terminated now, right? It's been terminated for months, is what I understand. That's a good thing. The neighborhoods around here have been, I can name several neighborhoods, and I'm sure everybody who lives here can also name some, that deter, deter. I think the council, the bottom line is, you should put the vote on this, should reject the vote for Wilkes, which was in, as I saw in the paper, I got a few, couple more minutes, right? One or two?
Go ahead, Sam, I'll stop.
One minute at least?
We'll go.
Sorry, and forget to talk to you. But I would like to see these voted on separately, and I would like to see, okay, I'm certainly not against the move for the historical society, I'm certainly not against the, there's something else here, I forget, but, you know, the levy system, I thought funding for those things was in place already, but I guess that's not the case, so I'm not voicing my position to that, but I'm definitely vehemently opposing the application that the city, I know, is acting as a conduit, as a flow-through for this money, and I think it's about time, okay, if you want to help Wilkes University out, at least apply, attach a stipulation to it. We'll apply for this LSA money, you stop cutting down our 50-year mortgage crease for that school late, okay, but if you could contribute more to the city's butt instead of the lousy $100,000 that you contribute, as we compensate for by the public in general. Why, are you guys afraid of Wilkes or Kings in that respect? I just want to repeat one more thing, won't take 10 seconds. Years ago, Mayor McGory begged, begged for the Ramada to come down here. Now, okay, begged, and they came in, might have been a good thing, I guess they got some economic gain, and lo and behold, it was sold to King's College, and now it's tax-free. This is the kind of thing that's going on in the city, and between that and the KOZs, where is this, you know, what's going to happen here when next budget comes around? Okay, I've said...
Thank you, Sam. Sam, there are two items on our agenda of resolutions for the LSA money, half a million for Solomon Creek Repair, Solomon Creek Repair Walls for half a million, and Mill Street is also put on by the city.
But what's the...
The city is applying for two LSA loans, or grants. Solomon Creek Wall, half a million, and Mill Creek.
I don't object to those.
I'm just saying, we are, this money comes into the city, into City Hall.
Yeah, okay, there's one, okay, I see that. That's great, but these other projects that they said, I wish you would have second thoughts on at least.
Thank you. Anyone else on pending legislation? John?
John Zoski, Paul Lee. First, I need this question answered before I keep going. Will the city apply, is there going to be another round of LSA grants coming through by council?
That's up to the mayor. You know, he's not here, I mean, maybe Charlie would know, but I don't, I don't know.
Finish this presentation.
I don't have president applications.
Okay, you do.
The time period is September, so we have some...
Yeah, it's still the end, that's right, it is still the end of August.
There's also statewide, right, and that's why it's coming here, because we don't have a secondary meeting.
Okay, okay. I asked that question, I needed to answer first, just to say, like, you know, these are a finite amount of funds that we'll receive. Mill Street received, to the best of my knowledge, is 2.7 million, and the least we received is 700,000. So we're going to get somewhere in between there. So I always say that you gotta, you know, pick and choose which ones you pass, not that it was ever listed to me, but like, I think that's important, like, we don't have a huge amount, like, you know, maybe we can get all these grants, because we're not applying for that, I'm not for them, but, okay. Has anybody received any campaign contributions from any of the applicants, or have any conflicts of interest? Because I know in the past that, like, Tony Brooks isn't here, he voted on things, on one of the grants, which he had a conflict of interest and still was able to vote on, so, does anybody have any conflicts of interest? Now, and, like, we congratulate you guys. I guess we solved all crime, there's no crime, the police department is fully funded and doesn't need anything, because we're applying for a grant for Wilkes, for their public safety, like, we're applying for a grant for a police force that is not our own in our city, and if we're applying for a grant and not applying for any grants for our own police force, must mean that we don't, that our police department needs nothing, we don't have any crime, we don't have any problems, so I want to congratulate you guys. So they're asking for a grant for cameras. We've gone through this with the LSA grants before, where we got those Hawkeye cameras, and how well did that work out? And does anybody know where those Hawkeye cameras are, and what's going on with them right now? I know where they are, I have a picture of them on my phone. They're being put to great use right now. I'd like to know, you know, anybody else knows where those Hawkeye cameras are? Because last time we invested in cameras with these things, what happened, and did we use them? So, and now, when the gentleman, the officer from Wilkes was here, he said that their cameras helped stop, or our police used their cameras for some kind of crime or something, do we have any idea of how many incidents that they helped, their cameras helped solve? Because that's something you guys should know, if it's a worthwhile investment, to invest into their camera system, which I think is just not the right move. I mean, for the, Wilkes gives us less in contributions to the city, voluntary contributions to the city, because they don't pay taxes, than this grant. So we're going to give them, we're going to help them apply for more than they give to the city. That's why I always say that there's no point of helping them keep receiving funds if they're, you know, we have the balls on our court. You guys keep doing this, keep proving their grants, there's, they should be contributing more to us if we're helping them get more money than they actually contribute to us. With this hotel project, anytime I hear hotel, it scares me for the downtown. Sam brought up the Ramada. Like, if the Ramada was willing to sell down there, it tells me that they didn't think that there was confidence in the, in our area to, or they weren't making any money on hotel. I don't know if these guys can make money, I don't know. It scares me, because all the other hotels that we've had are, have been, they've been jokes. They're just properties that are sitting there, that, so, at least they have, like the guy said on Tuesday, he has a building, I don't know, I hope you ask about their funding to see if they're actually going to do it. And here's a question, what would happen if he got, he received, they passed this, he received the money, and then he wasn't able to complete his project? What would happen with that LSA money if he was not able to do the project, and would it come back into the city? Does any of these applicants have any contracts with the city? Does any of their businesses or anybody have any contracts with the city? And, like, I really think we should prioritize, like, the walls, the two brick walls are the most important things that we have there. Like, that's how you keep your, the insurance levels low for the people who live next to them, you keep their houses protected. I think, you know, those things, I always, I've been saying it for years, these things should be prioritized. Like, maybe you guys get all the funding you need, maybe some of these other grants will suck away funding from those, and you don't get the brick walls fully funded, so that's why it always scares me where you guys, I mean, I don't waste my breath, because you're going to vote yes on probably every one of them, but, you know, you should have some kind of prioritizing, where the city projects are taken care of first, and then maybe you'll do somebody else's project, but I don't know. And just, does anybody campaign, anybody receive any campaign contributions from any of the applicants, and do any of these applicants have any kind of contracts with the city?
I have. So John, me, just talk for a minute. First of all, you always bring good points to the table, I appreciate that. The conflict of interest for me, no. No contributions, not related to any of them, nothing like that. And secondly, I do agree with you with the colleges contributing more money. I've said that for the past three and a half years, I certainly agree with you on that as well. That's what we have to say.
Just a couple of things. So I'll be abstaining on two of them because of conflicts of interest, the loser in bank building resolution, and the Wilkes University resolution. Secondly, I think you bring up a good point regarding contracts with the city. I'm assuming Falcione, he has a, he's the one that has the towing contract with the city, correct? Okay. Did we check into the legality of that with LSA grants? Does he, are we allowed to vote on that, being that he does have a contract with the city?
I don't have any idea.
No, no, I'm just looking at you. Well, you're the chairperson.
I know that there's rules set out in the LSA about conflicts of interest and things like that, so, you know, that would be important thing to know before, you know, that's all I'm saying.
You mentioned about the money that Friday, and say that they don't proceed with the project, it would go back to the state. They can't just hang around.
Okay, so we would, yeah.
It would go back to the state.
Man, just, just because, like, that's what scares me about it, because if, you know, they can't complete that project, that's money that could have went to the brick walls or, you know, to the historic society, which I'm also for that one, I didn't mention.
Possibly, possibly.
Mr. Barrett, conflicts of interest or no?
No, no, but I'm listening to your question, is it a conflict because of the fact that they do have a contract with the city? That's where I'm thinking, and I, I'm not an attorney, but I don't know if that would preclude them from, from us approving this resolution. I don't imagine it would, but again, I'm not an attorney, so...
I wouldn't think so.
It'd probably be in the DCED guidelines.
What's that?
It would probably be in the DCED guidelines, a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't know.
I'm not aware of anything that would preclude them from applying.
I'm sure Mark Barry did his due diligence.
But there is a time deadline on this, and we would have been unable to approve or disapprove it.
I mean, I would be fine if, I mean, I, I think John brings up a good point, I don't feel comfortable voting on that, not fully knowing that information. I mean, worst-case scenario, if we find that there is not a conflict, we could call a special meeting for that, for one item? That's a possibility?
I think, obviously, I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable with that, what, you know, John had brought up, and if we're not sure about it, me personally, I'm not comfortable voting on that right now.
My question is, and I think it's everybody's question, does the fact that they have a contract with the city preclude them from applying for this resolution? And allowing, and us allowing this application to move forward? I don't know if it should stop them from applying.
I would think so. It's too different.
I wouldn't think so also, but I'm not certain.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I wouldn't think it would.
Like I said, I think Mark Barry would do it.
I don't think it should stop them from applying for something. I'm trying to think of another example that we may have had in the past, where organizations might have had some sort of contractual agreement. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but... Charlie, you have anything to add to it?
It's a regulatory, sorry. It's, I believe it's a question for DCED, so that if the application goes down, you're just, you're just saying that you, as a city, you support the application to go down, but that's reviewed by DCED. So when they go down, when it goes down, they'll pull the reg, and then if there's a conflict that is listed, then they'll pull them, that they're not applicable to get the grant.
That's a good point.
The decision as we made down by DCED, whether the rates, and I'm not, I'm not versed on their rates to tell you whether there's a violation or not, but that will get picked up in their application process and through the regulatory review by DCED. I don't think anybody on council places themselves in any type of jeopardy that way, because it's a, it's a state regulatory review rather than a review by city council.
Would that, like, would that come before the funding process then, so that wouldn't hurt any of our funding, like, you know, you say they funded it?
Correct, yeah. They, if I understand the process correctly, again, I'm not a regulatory expert, but my understanding is, they'll review the application with all of the applicable information, they have to submit all of their business background, and there's probably a bunch of affirmative documents that you have to send down to DCED. That'll be reviewed, and in addition to whether the objectives of the project fit the DCED objectives that they have set down.
Okay.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Anyone else on pending legislation?
Okay, Kathy? What did we, we're going to vote on that, or?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so the first resolution we're going to vote on, the first two. All right, so the first resolution we're going to vote on, the first two separately. The first one is Luzern County Local Share Assessment Grant for $500,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to be used for the Bloxton Hotel. We'll need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Belishko. Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Abstain.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
The second resolution is Luzern County Local Share Assessment Grant of $180,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to be used for the Wilks University Campus Police Emergency Response Upgrades. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Abstain.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
Okay. And then the final vote will be on the consent agenda, which includes the resolutions and the minutes.
Motion.
Motion, motion by Mr. Belishko.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is there any way that we could vote on the Sherman Street one separately?
Sherman Street?
Where, where am I?
Find it here.
Yeah.
We'll do that one first, then.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll take the vote on the Sherman Street Property Business Center Roof Replacement. We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
I'm going to abstain, just because I feel a little uneasy about it still. I understand Mr. McCormick's point and all that, but I just, that's why I'm abstaining.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yeah.
Kathy, quick question. I thought we were voting to take that off of the agenda.
No, she wanted to vote on it separately.
Okay, so I'm going to take back my yes, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's okay.
And I want to abstain as well, because of the circumstances.
So the resolution does not pass?
Well, with two extensions, because of the vote.
Huh?
Two extensions.
Two extensions and no, I mean, a, a, yeah.
We got a resolution.
No, we need three.
We still have to vote.
You need three out of five. You got two.
You don't need the majority of the votes, do you?
Well, we still don't have the majority. There's four, and you get, it's split. Am I correct?
Aren't you two abstentions? Like a, like a non-vote. See, you know what I'm saying?
I would double-check that with Mari.
If he said no, it would be too long.
I would check with her.
Abstentions, yes. As a resolution, you're just, you just need more yeses than no's.
We need a four, we need three yeses.
You got a resolution?
I believe so, too.
Okay, well, you guys know.
Okay.
Again, I apologize for the confusion, guys.
That is Belishko on my phone. Let's get back to, okay. So now we're going to do the remainder of the resolutions that were on the consent agenda and the minutes. So that's the consent agenda minus the Sherman Street. So now we need a motion and a second on the.
Motion.
Yes. Which Charlie just pointed out also includes the Oktoberfest Resolution. So we need a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
Motion.
By Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Belishko. Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
So that is all of the business, so we can move on to council presentations.
Council presentation, Councilman Marconi?
Just, uh.
Just one more. Charlie came up today. Again, Court Street, there's brush, it's coming over the guardrails, coming onto the streets. There's also a fire hydrant that's being overgrown with grass. Also, on the way out of Court Street, there's no stop sign there. If we can check into that, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thanks, that's all I have.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, just two things. First, again, to Mr. Sahoski's point, I think it's great that the administration is applying for LSA funding for two major projects in the city. But every year I ask, you know, if we could apply for LSA funding to make more improvements within the neighborhoods as well, you know, such as infrastructure improvements and beautification projects, things like that. You know, I'm not saying that any of these projects aren't worthwhile, but I would like to see us applying for more funding in that regard. And then in regards to the American Rescue Plan funding, how much of that do we roughly have left? If you don't have the exact.
In the account, I believe there's about eight, but there's still all the projects that have proven fully paid.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you what is, you know, what hasn't been allocated.
Okay.
Certainly getting down there for budgetary, you know, we have one half of this budget that we have transferred in, so we're getting down.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett?
I, I agree with what Ms. Gilbert said about local projects as well. Actually, I just spoke to Mr. Barry about that very issue, and I have, I, the last meeting, I brought up the lack of sidewalks in certain areas, and John and I have had this discussion as well. And I think that that would be a perfect example of an LSA application that would benefit a lot of residents within the city and the city as a whole. Creek walls, of course, are a safety issue, and sidewalks as well. One of the, if you may recall, I brought up above sidewalks going from Parsons under the Cross Valley up towards Denny's. There are none, and people are walking on the streets. Those types of things would make good projects to apply for LSA funding, because they're expensive, we don't have them budgeted, and I've been looking for sources of funding. I tried to inquire as to whether the state could do those, but that may take some time to get that done. So I plan on doing what you just said, applying for funding through the office to facilitate those. Of course, we have to budget, we have to spec them out, engineer them out, and get that type of information, but I think we can do that, working with the city administration to move forward with those types of projects. So yes, I agree with what you're saying. There are some projects that are perfect for that, but I also don't want to preclude other entitled entities from applying as well. But, and I have nothing further since last Tuesday.
Good idea, Bill. Being that nobody came to my kitchen to read the sanitary meeting report, I had a copy made out for everybody. These are from the beginning of the year to present. The streets that were paved, or clean, touch basins that were clean, and the touch basins that were replaced.
Thank you.
Public comment? Jessica McClay.
Hi, I'm Jessica McClay, Martha's Vineyard. I actually have two things. So earlier spring, the early summer, there was going to be a new barbecue restaurant down across from Shields. And I remember that, and we asked very questions about financing, and he stated that it would be open by the end of summer. We are at the end of summer, so did that talk to you enough through? Is he not building? There's nothing of construction equipment from the roads there. So I have that question. And then my next one is the old Philly Subs by Mill Creek. That, they toured hard, they put up makeshift, I don't even know what you would call that, and it looks terrible, and nobody's been there in months. So I've just got him on someone's radar, that's my question.
So, so just, just, just real quick, my district, as you know, I, I've been communicating with, with the administration over that several times, and, and, and the administration has responded, you know, more than several times with the high grass and it looking like a huge eyesore. I, I agree, you know? The administration is aware of it, so are we, and I know the grass was just, well, the weeds and the grass and everything else, it was very, very high there, probably about two weeks ago. And I did submit it to Charlie, it was taken care of. I think about a month ago, maybe five weeks ago, there was debris all over the place. And again, I spoke with Charlie, and a couple days later, you know, it was very, very quickly. So it was taken care of. So I just want to let you know, it is on the radar. Sorry, Charlie.
No, no, that's fine. It's your district, I'd rather you explain that. As to the, the old mill, as a matter of fact, last week, the real estate closing company contacted me, there were some issues with title, they needed clarification, that was really the delay that was going on. And they represent a funding, lending institution, so it sounds like it's going to move, move forward. They, I believe they reached out to the solicitor's office this week to get some clarification as the exact area, because there are two parcels down there, but it's moving on from that latest indicator.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Angel Mathis?
Angel Mathis wants to go. First, I have to say thank you, Charlie, for this morning, and the probability to have actively done it, because it was very successful. But I do have one, one request from one senior. The stairs going into the amphitheater portion of the square, is it possible that you could get railings on the, I want to say, is the east side near where the stage is? I believe that's the east side. Because a few of them were tripping over there, where the tables and chairs, that set up like patio area. And then the second question I had is the same question I had tonight. A senior asked me yet again when I gave the response about the police reports. They wanted to know, one, why are the police reports so expensive? Two, is there any way, is there any program set up where they could get a reduced cost to the police report? Because they can get one for their dog license, but not for a police report. And three, where does the money actually, what makes up the cost of a police report? And the third thing I had is about parking. As you all know, I live on South Franklin Street, where there's only parking on one side of the street. And because there is only one parking on one side of the street, lately we see an influx of people parking in, parking in the driving lane, park opposed, park opposing traffic in the traffic lanes or in the park lanes. We see people who are parked on corners, specifically the one on Academy in South Franklin going towards Children's Service Center, where they, where literally they're on a corner. And it's just like a myriad of parking that someone's going to get killed. What can we do about it? That's all I have.
Angel, Rob Slick, who's the head of our parking enforcement, the, I'll talk to him tomorrow, he's coming in to see me. I'll increase, you know, them going down. I've seen that also on Franklin, for some reason, people just park their car next to double park, basically New York double park.
Where they park the other way.
I've seen it a couple times. The problem with that is we have to have enforcement in there to get there, and all the council, council people know that calling and getting people there, and then all of a sudden they're gone. So I understand that situation. The other, I think the corner of Academy and Franklin is one of the places, you know those parking camera systems that we were testing? That's one of the places that we're going to place one of those, because that's a heavy, heavy use on there. We're working with the company that's doing that to have additional places around, because the testing seemed to be pretty good. We've had good response, so that's an area that we're going to be looking at. But I will send Rob over there. And I'll check with Chief Coffee about the police reports. Frankly, that, that did not get onto my notes, and the last time you asked it, I should have written it down. So I'll follow up with it. I got it down on my notes, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Sam, still here? He left? Joe Sahoski?
John Sahoski on the way. I just had this question brought up, we'll, you guys will discuss it a bit. This is probably a question more for you, Kathy. Procedurally, like, John didn't hear what he was saying, and so he was confused. Is he allowed to second that? Like, does his second stand even though he abstained, or does, it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
It's just to get it on the table for a vote, so anybody can move in second, and then if he wants to vote no or yes or.
Okay. I, yeah, I just had that, had a discussion about that. So I was talking about earlier, I mentioned about the Hawkeye cameras. I'm pretty sure I know where they are. Does anybody know where the Hawkeye cameras, whatever happened to them, where they are?
No.
Give me your time, John.
Okay. So First National Bank Building. I know that we had two different times where we had meetings here where we had some kind of sales agreement. Does that sales agreement still stand, or did that one fall through? I mean, the first one was a George Albert thing, so it's not a shocker that a George Albert deal falls through. And so I can still have the Sterling sitting there, like, doing nothing. But I just wanted to, do we still own that? If the deal fell through, are we still maintaining it, doing maintenance work on it? What's the whole deal with the First National Bank Building and the Hawkeye cameras? And that's all I have.
John, I, I believe the Hawkeye cameras aren't working anymore. I think there was only a few left that worked at all, and I think they might be actually working. I think they have a room over in the police, police department that they had the cameras set up. I don't know if they're using them, monitoring them, or even if they're working, but I'm pretty sure they weren't.
Can I answer you for the First National Bank? The agreement is still in effect. There was an issue about, we had a major leak, and they were about ready to close. The city's resolving that, and it's just about 90% resolving it. There was a broken sump pump down the block, as a matter of fact, we're replacing tomorrow. And there was a clogged pipe up in the top, so all those heavy rains went down. So right now, we're resolving the issues that the purchaser said had a problem with it, and we anticipate once those are resolved in the next two weeks, that we'll proceed with purchasing.
Okay, so technically it's still ours right now?
It is still ours, yes. But we're just trying to resolve the issues that were not present when he had gone through before. And as a matter of fact, two weeks ago, he discussed the matter and said, well, as far as he was concerned, if they get resolved, it should be good to go. So I can only express what we have right now.
Is there any kind of, like, is there any kind of date, like, if he doesn't, if purchase doesn't go through by that date, does it, like, do we cancel it, or would that go on forever?
No, I, probably what's going to happen, although it's the solicitor's office, there'll probably be a, a den of acknowledging that this was resolved and putting, again, a mandate on the closing.
Okay, so there is no mandate, though?
Well, there, there might have been, but the parties have basically been back and forth, sending it so we can resolve it. I don't have the agreement in front of me, I don't recall. Generally, they do have a mandate, they have a closing date on it.
Thank you, John. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.